Good morning and welcome to the December tenth meeting of the City Utilities Committee. I'm Councilmember Antonio Lewis, Chair of the Committee. I'm joined by Councilmembers Alex Wan, Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, and Councilmember Howard Shook, all to my left. Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
It's been moving properly second, moved by Councilmember Wan, second by Councilmember Shook. Please open the vote.
One moment. The vote is open. The vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays. The agenda has been adopted.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes? It's been moving properly second. Mr. Johnson, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
We have...
The vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays. The minutes have been approved.
We have one speaker signed up today. Costco Jones, Mr. Costco Jones, and we'll go right into that.
Good to start.
Good morning, Mr. Jones. Yes, sir.
Okay, good morning. How you doing, Costco Jones, City of Atlanta Clean Energy Advisory Board? Represent the people. I am here to bring up something that I'm trying to get sponsored by someone. It's called the Audit for Affordability Legislation. Basically, what it would do is create a pathway where as people could do energy audits at point of sale as opposed to just having to do a regular real estate home inspection. What that does is that aligns people to be able to be eligible for the IRA tax credits, which are federally in place, as well as the new GFA program that's being rolled out. We want to make sure that new homeowners can go ahead and take advantage of these incentives and be able to stack them so that they can age in place and lower their operating costs in their home. Obviously, you know, we could get into the energy burden statistics. I'm not here for that. Y'all are aware of that. But I want to make sure that people can age in place. I want to make sure that legacy residents have access to these opportunities as well. Because, for example, if your HVAC unit goes out in your home, you can still get an energy audit and then still take advantage of these tax credits as far as improving your home and things of that nature. I want to make sure that we're also staying up to snuff as we get an influx of people and things happening for the World Cup. So that the people that are coming for those things, we're just making sure that we're curving our demand on the grid from the bottom up. And that starts with this legislation and helping people be able to get to work. Some of the most recent numbers, over 15,000 homes were purchased here in the metro Atlanta area this year. So at $850 an energy audit, that's over $11 million that, you know, could have been, you know, people could have been working, making that money, getting trained up, being put to work. Some of the other statistics, that's another demographic as far as skilled labor that is aging out, even though it's an emerging industry. The average building scientist is a 55-year-old white male. I'm 40 years old. I'm black, so it's a lot of opportunity for training over at Clark Atlanta through the technical colleges as well. So it's basically really just an alley-oop, and I would like somebody to, you know, to sponsor us. I have one more year on the Clean Energy Advisory Board, so I will be coming back next year. We have some other things coming. I'll be coming with more people next year, but it's a good opportunity to be on the right side of history, especially as we get into this time of the year where people are really making hard decisions on gifts versus, you know, the bills that they know are going to be coming. So I would really just like to reiterate Audit for Affordability and finding somebody on council to sponsor me so we can get this pushed through next year. Thank you.
And did you already, do you have any information on it?
Yeah, I've given out, I've given out policy briefs at the city council meeting numerous times, like two or three times this year. So that's why I didn't bring any today. But I can come back next month with more briefs if need.
I think the next, and in our next meeting, we'll have the presentation from the Office of Sustainability. And so it'd be a good time to bring it to. So if you can, please bring in the first utilities meeting of 2025 and bring it, please.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So that's the last speaker I have on the list signed up for public comment. We have a presentation today, but we're going to change the meeting, change the agenda just a little bit. We're going to go first through our ordinance's first reading.
This takes us to our consent agenda, section G, ordinance for first reading, item number one, 2401701, and ordered by City Utilities Committee, waiving part two, chapter two, article 10, division four of the Atlanta City Code to ratify services rendered in connection with agreement listed herein, maintenance agreement for permeable pavers with Ed Cashell Landscape Incorporated retroactively affected from December ninth, 2023, through the execution of the second renewal notice to amend the vendor name change due to an ownership change to acknowledge the first term of the renewal option under the agreement was affected from December ninth, 2023 through December eighth, 2024, to exercise the second renewal option under the first agreement retroactively affected from December ninth, 2024 through December eighth, 2025, to add funds to the agreement in the amount not to exceed $400,000.00. All contract work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department, Organization, and Account Number listed herein and for other purposes. Item number two, 2401701, and ordered by City Utilities Committee, authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to amend the FY 2025 Water and Wastewater Renewal and Extension Fund budget in an amount of $2,029,694.44 to transfer funds from watershed reserves for appropriation to add funds to the Entrenchment Creek WRC decommissioning project and for other purposes. Item number three, 2401702, and ordered by City Utilities Committee, authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to amend the FY 2025 Water and Wastewater Renewal and Extension Fund budget in the amount of $7,500,000.00 to transfer funds from watershed reserves for appropriation to add funds to the stormwater annual contract project and for other purposes. This takes us to our regular agenda, section H, resolutions. Mr. Chair, the department requests to take items four and five together as a block. These items both require substitutes. The substitute corrects the agreement number. Now, we have a motion to bring forth the substitute for these items.
So second, moved by Councilmember Wan, second by Councilmember Lewis. Please open the vote. Please bring it forth. Open the vote to bring it forth.
One moment. The vote is open. The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays.
We've been joined by the Honorable...
These items have been substituted.
And we've been joined by the Honorable Councilmember Andrea Boon. Please, anything, please proceed.
Mr. Chair, let me sound the substitute caption for both these items. Item number four, 24R4608, a substitute resolution by City Utilities Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute the First Amendment to an emergency procurement agreement listed herein for the small meter installation with KMD Davis Contracting Company Incorporated on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management to extend the term of the agreement for a period of one year from January 15, 2025 through January 14, 2026, in an amount of, amount not to exceed $1,500,000.00. All contract work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department, Organization, and Account Number listed herein and for other purposes. Item number five, 24R4609, a substitute resolution by City Utilities Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute the First Amendment to an emergency procurement agreement listed herein for our small meter installation with Titan Unlimited LLC on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management to extend the term of the agreement for a period of one year from January 15, 2025 through January 14, 2026, in the amount not to exceed $300,000.00. All contract work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department, Organization, and Account Number listed herein and for other purposes.
Mr. Smith.
Good morning, Chairman.
Okay, it's been moved. We actually have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith, we have a question from Mr. Shook.
Yeah, just real quick, these are our emergency procurements because...
The original solicitation was deemed not acceptable. We only had one participant, a one-approved applicant, and from the purchasing department, there was some dialogue in regards to the way the contract was structured, and the decision was made to re-advertise.
Okay, I mean, so instead of just a do-over, why would it be an emergency?
Because at the time, we still, those services are ongoing. So we needed to have a contract available to meet the current demands. And the length of time it takes to go through a solicitation process would delay those installs and create hardship to our customers and the developers in the area.
So we're going to have to go through this again eventually at some point. So why was the bidding response so anemic the first time?
That is a very good question, Councilman Shook. We've seen limited participation on most of these bids. We are working internally to try to develop a, I guess, a resource or a, you know, a committee to address the lack of participation on some of these contracts. But we go through the normal solicitation process. I guess, Commissioner.
Excuse me. So to answer your question, Councilmember Shook, we are looking at that particular solicitation. There are some requirements for potential bidders that we may be able to relax without compromising the proper installation of those meters. So with procurement's help, we're going to go back and look at those requirements.
All right, thank you.
It's been moved by Councilmember Wan, second by Councilmember Westmoreland. Please open the vote. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays. These items are favorable on substitute. Mr. Chair, if there is no objection from the committee, can we take items six through eight together as a block?
Please do.
Item number six, 24R4612, a resolution by City Utilities Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute the First Amendment to the memorandum of understanding and contract item agreement with the State of Georgia Department of Transportation on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management to add funding for the intersection improvement project along State Route Three and State Route Seventy in Fulton County in the amount not to exceed $39,472.75. All contract work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department, Organization, and Account Number listed herein and for other purposes. Item number seven, 24R4613, a resolution by City Utilities Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designated to enter into a memorandum of understanding and contract item agreement with the State of Georgia Department of Transportation on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for the purpose of adjusting water and sewer infrastructure that conflicts with the State of Georgia Department of Transportation's intersection improvement project along State Route Ninety-two at County Road, 174 Butler Road in Fulton County in amount not to exceed $24,074.39. All contract work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department, Organization, and Account Number listed herein and for other purposes. Lastly, item number eight, 24R4614, a resolution by City Utilities Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designated to enter into a memorandum of understanding and contract item agreement with the State of Georgia Department of Transportation on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for the purpose of adjusting water and sewer infrastructure that conflicts with the Department of Transportation Milling and Resurfacing Project along State Route One Thirty-nine from East Ontario Road to west of Harwell Road in Fulton County in the amount not to exceed $671,846,040. All contract work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department, Organization, and Account Number listed herein and for other purposes.
Mr. Wells, moving properly, moving properly second, moved by Councilmember Wan, second by Councilmember Westmoreland. Is there anything from the committee? Please open the vote.
Thank you.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays. These items are favorable. Mr. Chair, that takes us back to section F, Presentations, Updates, and Reports.
Good morning, Chairman Lewis, committee members, Al Wiggins, interim commissioner, Department of Watershed Management. Thank you for the opportunity to present Q1 of DWM's first quarter presentation. Excuse me. Okay, we'll start off by, with the Administration and Finance section. First of all, we've made a lot of significant progress over the last six months, as you'll see in all areas of DWM. But we'll start out with our staffing position. Chairman Lewis, as you know, you've been very supportive of assisting us with any of our vacancy issues or our staffing challenges. I think you'll be happy to see that across the entire department, we're up as it relates to staffing. I think this is a direct result of the work that's being done by our staff, specifically the team with DWM University as they partner with the Atlanta Technical College to develop programs in the area of operator licenses and CDL training courses. And we're starting to see a return on that investment. Currently, we have about 149 vacant positions from entry-level positions up to grade eighteen. Grade eighteen is the first step below immediate, excuse me, beginning supervisor. About eighty-nine of those 149 positions require a license of some sort. And so, again, we've placed a lot of focus on ensuring that we prepare our team members to be able to pass the certification exams by extending the duration of the course through increasing the time of those classes. We've seen a lot of positive results that we're very proud of. So we have seen some turnover. We had about seventeen resignations, but we also had about seven rehires. So we're closely looking at the exit exams to see if there are anything, if there is anything that we could do to improve our retention levels. But the majority of them, they are just leaving for better opportunities that sometimes that we can't match and sometimes just really outside of this particular career field. We do have a career fair planned for the first quarter of next year at the Atlanta Technical College. Again, our goal is to recruit many of the positions that require licenses and certifications. We hope that that, well, we believe that this will be a successful career fair with the technical college just because of the students that are there and the familiarization with the program that we have underway now. Speaking of DWM University, this next slide addresses some of the courses that are currently underway. More importantly, the courses that have been completed. You'll see with our wastewater treatment process, we completed about eight graduates. We have, their examinations are scheduled to be taken soon. And also, we have about eight participants in our CDL program, and many of them are waiting or in the process of taking their exams also. And we've seen significant success for our CDL program as well. So this has significantly helped with our challenges with equipment operators. So a brief snapshot of our FY 2025 budget. This is the first quarter of the year. So we should be at about 25% at our spending level, and we are trending accordingly. So I think our highest area is about 24%. So we're confident that we'll be able to trend in the same direction throughout the remainder of the year. All right, here's a brief snapshot of our most revenues. You'll see we started out a little slow, the months of July and August. But we anticipate throughout the year that we will be on schedule with the anticipated revenues. Again, this is just a monthly average. You'll see for the month of September, the collections were slightly above the anticipated amount, but we're confident that we will meet our target by the end of the year. Next slide, you'll see our FY 2025 operational results. You'll see our revenues are trending slightly higher than the projected monthly collections. You may notice that the expenses are lower than the revenue. Expenses are seasonal. By the end of the year, we expect for those numbers to closely match. And so therefore, the variance between expenses and revenue would be much different by year end. All right, next you'll see our water and sewer revenue is trending slightly above our FY 25 projections. Again, we anticipate that we will see something very similar to what we've seen for FY 2024. So we're in a comfortable position as it relates to water and sewer revenue collections. Just a brief snapshot of numbers. You'll see we have about 422 meter installations. I think this is about a 58% drop from the last time we reported for the Q4 report. That's mainly because the team was able to clear a large portion of backlogs for meter installations. So kudos to them for being able to get the meter installations back on schedule. We're very proud of, you'll see about 229 cases for care and conserve households. This number has increased. The Department of Finance has worked with many of the applicants to acquire information that some of the applicants were having challenges with providing. Through working with them, they were able to get that information, therefore being able to increase participation as well. We nearly had 5,500 accounts that were established during this period. And the rest of the numbers are pretty much on par with the previous report. Moving on to our OLEO service requests, you'll see that the top categories for this particular reporting period are leaking or break investigations, meter installs, and stormwater backups. The previous report, we stemmed from sewer backups to, I believe it was sewer main backups. But for this particular reporting period, the reason for the storm sewer backups is due to flooding from Hurricane Helene. So we anticipate in next quarter that the top three service requests will be consistent with the previous reports. Okay, so inspections and spills, we are slightly up this reporting period again because of Hurricane Helene. We had a few combined sewer overflows, excuse me, sanitary sewer overflows. The previous reporting period, we had about fifteen. We had twenty-six this reporting period due to issues associated with Hurricane Helene. We had about 20 public spills last reporting period. We're down to nineteen this reporting period. Last reporting period, we had about two major sewer spills, and we're up to fifteen this recording, reporting period. We have seen a significant reduction in private sewer spills. We're down to sixty-seven from seventy-nine. All right, so site development plan reviews. We issued about 387 permits during this reporting period. Two hundred and sixty-eight of those, the reviews, were for single-family permits. About 119 of those were for subdivisions. This reporting period, you'll see that District Eight has replaced District Nine's ranking. We're not exactly sure what would happen this reporting period, but we're looking into what the increase is. But whatever the increase is, it's welcome. Another note that I would like to make is that we're working closely with the Department of City Planning to identify bottlenecks in our plan review process. One of the items that we're working on is to enhance the existing permitting software program to include reviews that are being conducted by the Department of Watershed Management while the Department of City Planning, while they're also conducting reviews. We've seen a few bottlenecks in that area. But through the reconfiguration of the software program, we're expecting to see some improvements in that area. We think the numbers are great, but they're, we're always looking for opportunities to improve the process. All right, so here's a brief snapshot of our capital project summary. Looks like we have a formatting issue for the value of these projects. We're trending at almost $1.2 billion in capital improvement projects. The weight of this budget is primarily consent decree. We're about $525 million for consent decree-related projects. The sunset of the consent decree program will be in 2027. So much of the expenses that are going towards the consent decree program, we will be able to reroute those expenses to other areas of the utility. Okay, moving on to safety and security. We conducted about 1,400 inspections. Overall, our injuries are down. Next reporting period, we'll provide a side-by-side comparison to show how these numbers have dropped. Again, they've dropped across the board with the exception of property damage. That's about, that's remaining consistent. That's a pretty flat number. We're still working on reducing those numbers. Okay, for our key accomplishments, early in the... Okay, for our key accomplishments, early in the year, we discussed a pilot program that we were working on, which is a leak detection program. So we installed several leak detection sensors on some of our infrastructure such as fire hydrants, some of our water mains, some of our valves to be able to determine if any portions of the infrastructure is leaking. Phase one and two, we completed nine sites. Phase three, we began working with the Atlanta Department of Transportation, particularly as they are working on a pretty aggressive resurfacing strategy. We wanted to make sure before that work was conducted, we tried to identify if there was any issues that were subgrade that should delay the road resurfacing work. What we were really trying to prevent is the road being resurfaced and then us having to go back and open the road back up because of infrastructure-related issues. This program has been really successful. If you'll look at the daily loss, we've saved about 337,000 gallons over a 30-day period. It was about 19 million gallons, if I remember correctly, yeah, 19 million. Just taking into consideration, this is about the size of 30 Olympic-sized swimming pools. So we anticipate expanding this program. We have created a critical facilities overlay, primarily to be able to identify critical sites such as hospitals, correctional institutional, correctional institutions, senior facilities, any site that's critical. We've drawn an overlay around those sites, and more importantly, we've looked at the infrastructure that serves those particular locations with early warning detection sensors. And this, again, the program has worked very well. Okay, so for awards and accomplishments, very proud of the team. The 2024 Platinum Distribution System Excellence Award was given to DWM. Also, the Platinum Award was given on behalf of our water treatment and reclamation plants, and the Gold Award was given as well to our water treatment and reclamation plant. So Atlanta DWM walked away with many awards this particular year. Also, the 2025 Georgia Engineering Award for Green Infrastructure Design Challenge was given for projects in West Manor Park. Okay, so you'll see we recently completed the build-out of our command center. This is very important because we really need to have an eye on day-to-day operations, particularly how our crews are dispatched, how quickly we respond to complaints. You'll see the build-out of the command centers. We're still working through installing the appropriate software. We had a brief meeting with the executive leadership team yesterday, really to discuss our strategy for addressing water main breaks as we are in the winter season, of course, is the water main break season. It's not anything specific to Atlanta, doesn't have a tie to the condition of our infrastructure, but as you know, water main breaks occur due to cold weather. And so we met again to strategize on how we will respond to those issues. I would like to say that to the viewing public and to you committee members, if you can express to your constituents, that it's very important for them to update their customer information in a database, particularly their phone numbers. Should we have a water main break in the area, we'll have the ability to send a text message or a voice message to explain that an interruption will occur of water services, water services or a possible interruption may occur and the particular calls, and hopefully we can provide an estimate of how long the anticipated interruption will occur. Okay, so that concludes my presentation. I always like to end by just thanking the DWM frontline heroes. Shortly, I will be approaching my six-month mark with the department. They have been very open to change. They have been very supportive of me, and I appreciate them for that. I have learned a lot from the team. You know, many will say they learned a lot from me. I think I've learned more from them. I just want to let you know that you have a great staff with the Department of Watershed Management, and it's been very enjoyable for me to work with them. And I expect for us to continue to move the needle in a positive direction as we go into 2025. But again, thank you, Team DWM, for the support that you've given me over the past six months. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to address them at this time.
And thank you, Commissioner Wiggins. We can open up the questions from my colleagues. Seeing none, I guess I'll have the questions for today. And so I'll start with the, I try to tear out pages through the package so I can stay in line with this, so we'll start at the front. And today, for some reason, I come out of labor. We started talking about labor, talking about the jobs, and super impressed with the job report you gave. The one part I was stuck on is my labor background is Reginald Wells. He had, he's two positions. And so he's on the org chart twice, and there's, I feel like we're overworking him. I see him everywhere. I see him in here. So no, that's me, that's me making sure I know. I see him as Assistant Commissioner, and then I also see him as Office of Engineering Services. And so I know, and I also see him out in the field at different places, and I see him in here. And so I know that as we are growing as a city, as we are developing this org chart, you continue to fill out your staff, there's any kind of way we can make sure he's able to do this Assistant Commissioner job at the best of his abilities, and that way we're able to hire folks in other positions and not stretch them so much. So that was the first thing I had, Reginald Wells.
Yeah, can I speak to that? You're absolutely right. Assistant Commissioner Wells is a treasured team member. I had that discussion with the team yesterday about us putting a lot of weight on his shoulders. As you see, he has very broad shoulders, and he's been very supportive. You know, conversations I've had with Assistant Commissioner Wells, as you mentioned, he's filling in for the vacant Deputy Commissioner of Engineering Services position. We're in the rush to find the right person as opposed to being in a rush to fill the position. And I had a conversation as recently, dinner as recently as last night with a potential applicant.
And Commissioner, we don't have to go all the way into the HR stuff on there, but I just wanted to make sure we see both of them on, we see them on there twice, and I'm just making sure.
Understood.
Coming out of labor, they would be upset with me if I saw somebody doing two people's job, and I know he ain't getting two people's paychecks. So next. I know they'll work it out. I know we're stretching. I know we're working the part we got to, and I'll keep going after that.
But I, you know, I feel compelled to address that. Yes, Assistant Commissioner Wells is filling in in that slot, but it's, he's not doing it on a full-time basis. It's a collective effort, although he is in a position of leadership, but it's a combination of bringing in staff members from various divisions to make up that one vacant position. But I can assure you that we aren't working, Commissioner Wells, to the extent that he's performing two full-time roles. But again, he is a treasured team member.
I'm saying the same thing. I treasure him as well. I'm gonna keep going to make sure we're not on HR as much. Keep going through the package, 268 open positions. If possible, if you can let me know how many are entry for that job fair. That way we'll promote the entry level, because I know ATC will have everything else we need to fill the other positions, but the entry-level position, we could promote them more to the public. So if you could just let me know what they are.
So about 149 of those positions are grades 18 or below. So that's, grade 18 is a grade directly below the supervisor level. So, you know, these are all up to grades 18.
Okay. The, next I had ATC Career Fair. Thank you for continuing this. This is an amazing program we're doing. I was there, I was there to cut the ribbon with you. I think no person better than you to lead that, looking at the previous program you did with the DPW. So to know that this partnership is continuing is a good thing for us. The pay-in-class study, if possible, if we could promote to our employees that that will be hitting their paycheck in January?
January 1.
We could just let them know that the, because I know that they are, look, they're asking, and you know, they're going home for Christmas right now. Let them know, hey, in the new year, you'll be getting a few extra dollars. The pay-in-class study actually did go through, and just remind them that it actually went through.
Yes, sir.
What's, what's the identified unidentified ACE? It's on a different page. It's on, it's on page 16. You talked about site development plan reviews and unidentified in a cellar?
Yeah, so that's a formatting challenge. I mentioned earlier that we're working with the Department of City Planning to address software issues. For whatever reason, those cases aren't populating to a particular district. However, those numbers do account to the overall calculation for permits that are issued.
The number's so high, it's 98. So if there's any kind of way, we can try to go and look at them, because we want to make sure that we are offering the best resources and we're making sure people are being good actors. So if we can just try to identify the 98, just say where they are, so we can make sure we offer them the best resources. And also on that, if you can add a more detailed on capital, what this site development plans and on capital improvement projects, if you can add more details to the capital improvement summaries, just tell us, tell us the good work you're doing. When I see the large numbers, I see the different projects, I want to see some of the projects. Like, one project I know that you all are working, or have been working on, has been South River. So if there's any kind of way you can give us a one-pager, you can use that one as an example, but I would like the one-pager of the work that you, all of the good stuff you've been doing at South River. And so similar to that one-pager, I'm sure my colleagues would like one-pagers for things going on in their district. So South River would be a first example of a one-pager for capital projects that I would like to see.
Yes, sir.
Other than that, Commissioner, I appreciate this report, and I've appreciated working with you for the last six months. I know we went through Piper Gannon together, and so we are, we are where we are now. Anything else from my colleagues? Councilmember Boone?
Yes, I would like to thank the entire team who assisted with the Westview Town Hall meeting. That was a wonderful, wonderful, well-attended meeting, and we are anxious to do those follow-up items. And again, thank you all so much for coming out to the Westview Community Meeting about a month ago. We appreciate that. Please let Ms. Rawls and Mr. Wells and the entire team, the engineers that were there, it was a great meeting. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Commissioner, and to the men and women helping us out in the Department of DPW, Department of Watershed Management. The, we, that's the last presentation of the day.
Mr. Chair is the only presentation for the day.
Yep, and so I want to also say thank you to Attorney Roger, to Mr. Scott, Mr. Conway, Ms. Necker, and Mr. Johnson for all of the work that you've done throughout this year, helping me throughout my first year as Chair of the City Utilities Committee. I thank you for this, for helping us land this plane this first year and getting through. Also to my committee, my colleagues that I'm sitting next to, thank you all for working with me throughout this process and this bumpy ride and helping to land this plane as we got through again. If we don't have anything, any farewell words from our...
Yes, on yesterday, we had a constituent that attended the public safety meeting. She had some very important issues. She's here, can we speak with her? Could you come up, ma'am? She's from the Vine City District 3 community, Councilmember Byron D. Amos.
Thank you for, thank you. My name is Helen Williams-Bolston. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I was tired, so I appreciate that. The first thing I would like to address is the bliteness in what we have in our community. And there's a lot going on in Vine City in reference of bliteness, and I would like for everyone to actually take a moment and ride through my community to see how it has been set aside, trying to use the right words, set aside in reference of how it looks. It's very dialectic. The city has come in and done a lot of work. The watershed has come in and done a lot of work, especially to Cook Park. However, we need more. We need more. We need you to ride around and look at the actual parcels. We need that. I also have a concern with the electrical. I am being double billed. I had a conversation in the constituent services with Ms. Michelle. She confirmed that I was being double billed. I don't know how to address that. And if someone can speak to me today, I have what I need, but my community, Vine City, English Avenue, just the west side in itself, needs help. We need our streets clean. I walked my community, I walked past a meter on, I gotta close my eyes, on Vine Street. Unfortunately, this meter has been running for almost two years, and the water has just, it's not, it's not on the, it's not on the building, it's on the city side. It is on the city side. So all I'm asking is for you, when you do travel through these streets, just get out and actually look and deal with it, because who's getting, who's getting, who's getting the bill? If this water continues to run, you're, somebody's being billed.
So you are in the right place today. We have Commissioner Garman that is here.
Thank you.
And you have Commissioner Wiggins on the other side of you.
Thank you.
And we would like for them to speak with you.
I appreciate it.
And we will be doing some tours throughout the Vine City area with your councilmember, Byron Amos. Do you have his information?
He lives around the corner.
Okay, well, I, and I'll make myself available after the meeting as well.
I appreciate it.
And again, I want you to know that we truly appreciate you coming, and I'm gonna connect you with my contact at Georgia Power today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Everybody.
Commissioner Garman, I want to say thank you so much for the work you've been doing in the Department of Public Works. Thank you to the men and women of the Department of Public Works, and I want to say thank you for this year. If, Mr. Johnson, do we have anything else?
No, Mr. Chair, we do not.
Okay, let's go, let's get it.